Chairman, I move that we reopen the continued public hearing of zoning by law amendments, MBTA. Yeah, that's it.
Motion is second and discussion. We'll call vote. Mr. Boasi.
Aye.
Mr. English.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Maloney.
Aye.
Mr. Orbin.
Aye.
Mr. Woodhams.
Aye.
I think that I seven in favor, no one opposed, motion carries. So, a couple of things first. Appreciate all the input that we've gotten. I haven't had a chance to read it all, some of it just came in. But I've been trying hard today to, in the, in the gaps, to read. Um, I think what would be helpful, I saw a lot of recommendations on other sites, Rachel. It'd be helpful, I started to look at the GIS and try to figure out exactly where these sites are and figure out what, you know, what they are, are they, what zone are they in?
Are you asking me to make a map, Chair?
I was, I was suggesting that maybe that would be great.
This is right up my alley.
Have you already done this, Rachel? Because I have a suggestion.
I have not, so.
Used in our deliberations. And see which one of the proposed ones. We actually did look at.
See where the overlap is. I love this.
Yeah. All right, well, and that would be helpful because then I think we could come back and we could talk about each one. Um, I read through at least the ones you sent, Rachel, I think there were five letters. I think there was a bunch of sites listed in those, and I think it would be good for the board to understand really what those sites are, so we can talk about them and deliberate them. Which is what we said we would do, so appreciate everybody's comments. One other thing, and I'm going to read this. Uh, so there's been a lot of discussion outside of the board meeting regarding what the Board of Selectmen is working on in terms of the lawsuit and do we need to get our, we have our action plan in. Do we have to vote and have a town meeting before the July deadline? And I'm going to read a, an email I got from, um, my Kinga Town Manager. After having a recent conversation with, uh, the select board, uh, it would be better to hold off on submitting an MBTA zoning article for the June 2nd town meeting as the town is still awaiting the Commonwealth's financial impact analysis, which is needed for voters to make an informed decision at town meeting. Please continue to work on drafting an MBAT zoning article though, as the select board has the ability to call a special town meeting at any time and can do so once there is more clarity on the financial cost of compliance. So, that takes a bit of pressure off of us having to get this thing done for a certain date, which is the article, I think, is the third and getting something on the article so it can be at the June town meeting. So hopefully that helps the board. Gives us a little more time to deliberate on some of these sites that we're looking at and see if we want to make any changes to what we've proposed. I do have, and do you have anything else, Rachel, as new information for the board?
Um, no.
Okay. We can go down the board members. And see if you have any other thoughts or questions that we want to contemplate. Uh, to bring back information so we can review, analyze, and see if it, if it works as an alternate site for either of the two that we've already selected. And then we can open up for any public comment that is, uh, in addition to the letters that have been submitted. So, Mr. Boasi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just wanted to, you know, remind everyone that any, any, if the zones goes over any commercially zoned areas in town, then we need to, I believe, if I recall correctly, update the underlying zoning. And, um, so am I remembering that correctly? We also would have to modify the underlying commercial zone.
No, this isn't, it sits on top of it, unless you wanted to change the underlining zone, underlying zoning, but this overlay just sits on top of, and so
Okay.
An overlay district can be more restrictive or less restrictive. Um, so in this case, if they wanted to do a, you know, if they wanted to take advantage of the MBTA um, bylaw, they would have to adhere fully to the MBTA overlay bylaw.
Okay. I don't, okay, I don't know why I remember that. The other, my other comment was just, I do recommend if we end up looking closely at any zone that is currently commercially zoned, that it would be in the town's best interest to require mixed use development because that would ensure we continue to get some commercial income. Otherwise, the land could be converted to residential completely. So like, for instance, if we did end up looking at the mall, potentially perhaps like Route 1, um. The, my, so my last comment is just in terms of the Route 1 zone, you know, looking at the master plan. That was, firstly, it was just rezoned commercial, um, relatively recently, that in 2018. Secondly, the master plan, you know, was put together with community input. And that was the area, you know, that was preferred for commercial zoning, so I don't think we should lightly decide to change that to residential zoning.
You're talking Route 1 South, Route 1 North, and the crisp on Route 1?
Exactly, um, but in terms of the mall, like, I feel that that's one we can definitely look at. Again, those are all my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boasi. Mr. English?
I have no further comments. We, we put a lot of time on this. I think we, we got it pretty well, and, uh, I've read as many of the, uh, letters that have come in that I can. A lot of them are, like, to your point, have come in late. Uh, but, you know, it's, no matter where we put this, it's gonna be unpopular. And I think everybody needs to accept that it'll be unpopular, no matter where it goes. So that is the conclusion of my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. English. Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, yes, I have a, a couple of thoughts. Um, I read the, I read the letters. My first thought is I greatly appreciate those who took the time to suggest alternatives as opposed to just saying, please don't put it here.
Yeah.
That, I, 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 uh, very much appreciate, in particular, I, I was not going to name check anyone, but it seems that Mr. Brooks has taken the time to review all of the sub, subcommittees meetings, et cetera. And I appreciate the, the, the time and effort that took for him to bring himself fully up to speed on the deliberations that we did do. And I don't know how many other people were able to do all of that, but, um, I think I saw that a second letter, letter with recommendations came out after that effort, and I just want to acknowledge and appreciate that. Is an indication to me of, uh, appreciation of, you know, the, the time and effort we did put in. In some of the letters, and I don't know who said what, so I'm not going to try to, uh, organize that out. There was a general cadre of comments, which was how could we accept any more traffic in this area? Um, I'm not persuaded that there's going to be less gridlock during Gillette Sundays because we put this someplace or don't put it someplace. However, I am persuaded that the rating by the Conservation Commission and the master plans um, desire to have pristine open spaces maybe should recommend our relooking at the East Street location. I and I do agree with what Mr. English said, which is no matter where we put this, there's the potential for a boatload of new traffic and, you know, extra traffic in those areas, and even putting it down at the outlets is not going to curtail that. Um, it's just going to be traffic for the people down there as opposed to some other place in town. So, I, uh, I feel, I feel like it, it is, it is worth looking. I really do appreciate the suggestions, and I do believe we did look at a number of those suggestions, so uh, it would be good to, uh, have that comparison, and if we've missed things, certainly happy to, I, I think, I think the board should take the time to reconsider those new places. And then the final thing I'll say is I think the board may have been maybe too clever by half in thinking we could locate something in a place where it wouldn't be built. If the economics of the, of building it are good, it's gonna get built. And I believe that the moment we designate a location, some developer is going to run down to the town clerk's office or the, you know, and, and like, put in an application because I think any developer worth their salt knows what's happening legally in the Commonwealth. And they're going to try to get, you know, their ability to build this thing set in stone, uh, no matter where we put it. So I do think that when we, when we put it there, we should do so with the full belief that it's, something is going to be built there. And it may take a little longer or not, and that was a part of our deliberations that I agree with. But I don't, I don't think there's really much likelihood of, um, of putting it someplace and thinking, oh, that'll be so difficult to build, they won't build, they'll figure something out. So that's kind of how I, how I see that. And I do think that the Elysium Street location bears up, even in light of the comments I've seen. But I'm, I'm less convinced that the East Street location is the next best location. And so that's where I'm at. Um, before we have any further deliberations, those are my, that's my, that's my assessment of the information I've received. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Mr. Boasi about not contradicting our master plan and locating uh, or, uh, an overlay district where we have specifically desired to put commercial development. I think that's part of our economic, uh, development plan, uh, and I agree with Mr. English. I think i- i- if you, if the subcommittee wants to reconvene and, and review the, uh, the decisions that they made 90 days ago or 120 days ago, I, I, I would, I would support your reconvening. We did go to town meeting and say, this is the best plan for the town, and now, here, a few months later, we're saying, well, maybe not. Wherever we, whatever we do with the district, somebody's going to object. So if, if, if you, if the subcommittee wants to reconsider on legitimate grounds, and Mr. Lawrence might have touched on a couple of them, that's fine. If it's a matter of trying to, uh, you know, trying to avoid criticism, uh, from people who live in the area, you're going to get that anyway. So, and finally, remember, you know, to Mr. Lawrence, nothing is going to get built. Uh, under the current environment, this is a tremendously unpopular um, initiative in this town, so the only way it gets built is if the town changes its mind and really wants to comply with MBTA communities, or the state comes in and bulldozes us, in which case they're going to tell us where to put it anyway. So, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Orbin?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of echo a lot of the, the previous comments. I think these are going somewhere. Um, I think part of it, I think Mr. Lawrence touched on, is that part of, I think, our thought process, what some of the places may not be impossible to develop, but it might take a little bit longer. And then the impact on the town is not going to be as dramatic as, 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 specifically maybe the outlets, because I think that can go up sort of instantly. It, it did seem to me, I did read the letters and I, the lack of the sentiment, I appreciate the thought and everything put behind them. There did seem to be a lot of overlap. Um, I haven't specifically looked at things in the GIS yet, so I'm curious to see that. You know, the one question, and this might, I'm not saying that I support this, the question that I had, you know, is there a way, if, if, if we could do this in a way, do we, we really kind of gave it up to the people? In that we say, look, we think these two properties are the best, whether they be the two that we like the most or the, we've previously done, or, or if we change our minds here, these are the next best two that would also fit. Here's our warrant, you know, pick, y- y- you can vote for A or B, I don't know if it's doable, I don't even know if I like it. It just occurred to me a while out in, on a morning run, and, and that, that's sort of, it may not even be doable, but it's just something I wanted to throw out there, because it, it sort of puts this where I think it ultimately goes, is that while, while we've done the work and specifically the subcommittee, in the end, it puts it out to the people, and we can say, we think these are the two best places. Whether they, they be what we've already done or anything changed, and these might be the next two. We don't think they're as good for X, Y, and Z reasons, but people, it's, it's in your hands at this point, so. That's my sort of comments and thoughts, and again, I don't even know if the latter is, is doable.
Thank you, Mr. Orbin. Mr. Woodhams?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just, I, I need to take a look at the recommend or the suggested locations that came in through the public comment. Uh, I have not had a chance to do that and look at the GIS map. I do want to see that, and I want to see if there is any overlap between some of the areas that we spoke about, and we, we talked about, but upwards of 20, I think, separate locations in town, and the pluses and minuses of each one of them. I know we, as a, as a subcommittee, and certainly as the board as a whole, had been very hesitant to lay any of these where it's commercially zoned, because if you put the, if you put the housing over it, you, you're, you're now taxing it at residential rates as, as opposed to commercial. So I would just we need to make sure that it's, if it goes over a commercial area, that it's something that we can afford to lose that, that extra tax revenue. But to Mr. Maloney's point, if we don't come up with something that is acceptable to the townspeople, so that it is accepted, it's still going to get built, it'll get built on the, on the state's guidelines, not our own. Um, and we could end up with something way worse than it, any of us ever imagined, in a location that we do not want it. So that would be my only, my only caution to, to people who are don't, just don't want to comply under any circumstance. It's, it's, I, I have a feeling the state's going to make it happen one way or the other. But I would like to look at the, uh, the locations and compare it to the map that, of what we already look at. I'm, I'm not, I'm not uh, in love with anything that we located, and if it seems like it's the will of the board and the will of the public to change the locations, I, I have no problem with that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Woodhams. I still want to read through some of the letters and look at those sites, so I think, uh, Rachel, what, what we talked about first is bringing those forward with what the zones are and and evaluating them. Um, I don't know that we need to re-engage the subcommittee at this point. I think we do this through some public hearings, uh, with the board. Given that we have a little bit more time, we don't have to put this on an article for, uh, for April 3rd. There were comments previously, and it may warrant us looking at it, is an overlay of an existing completed development versus virgin land, so um, I've had some email conversations with some folks who were part of the planning board meetings before, and maybe sat in on some subcommittees about, is that, is that something we should consider so that you know, if we want to, if we, if we want to slow this down and or not have it built for a while to impact the town's finances, a development that's already built, uh, may be an option for, for an overlay, so that might be something else we look at. We had, uh, guiding principles, and if people haven't gotten a copy of the guiding principles, they're in the presentation that we gave to the town. If you see something that we didn't cover, because we did try to stick to the guiding principles in a line. Now, we didn't do a scorecard on that uh, for each site, but that might be something as we go through the next sites, we put a scorecard against the guiding principles and see if the sites that we're going to evaluate actually fit within, you know, the majority of those. So that might be something we could do, uh, as a board. Um, there was a comment about, I believe, in one of the letters about putting it in the town center on the development that's already on, uh, coming forward from a developer, hasn't come forward yet, but they've, we've done a lot of work with them over the two years. And Rachel, maybe you could explain to people why that site that already has eight units an acre doesn't work for this because we have to then, we don't get the eight, we don't get the 20, 15 units an acre. We'd have to put more units on some site, and we still have to make up the 50. There's a, there's a evaluation that we did on that town center site that said it's really not in our best interest to even look at that.
Yeah, so I, I think some, the board in the beginning um, did look at making the, this, the downtown Crosby Valve property what's called a mandatory mixed-use zoning district. In that, it would be mandatory that mixed use is provided at a certain percentage, which I think it's about 25 or 30% would have to be. And that was slight, that was, you know, a little bit less than what was in that visioning in your 2018 zoning, but it was right on par with what, um, had already been agreed to, what the board has really worked hard on. Now, if you just went with, you could take credit for only a certain amount of units, and then you'd still have to locate 50 acres and some additional units on a different parcel. So it didn't make sense to the board to do that. And so then there's the other option of, well, then just make it the straight MBTA zoning. Well, then that means it's 15 units by right. And the board, and the town has nothing, uh, no say in it. And so while, right now, yes, we have, are working with a, a great developer, um, they, they could change with this economic, who knows what's going to happen. They could change, and then somebody could come in and do 15 units per acre. And it would be much different than what the board has worked tirelessly, and the town in the 2018 zoning, have worked tirelessly to sort of see. So.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. And we had turned down three years ago that developer coming in at 15 units an acre. It was amazing the difference between what they're coming forward now and what a downtown 15 units an acre would do to the site as well as traffic in the downtown, so. We didn't, we're not going to go back and consider the downtown, and I wanted to give people that explanation, or have Rachel give you that explanation as to why that's not on under consideration. One of the letters said that the East Street property is next to something Norfolk and I think Foxborough is doing. Do we have any information on what that is and where exactly Norfolk and Foxborough are putting some piece of develop, big development or something? Because it was, the comment was, we're going to add one more component to that corner of those three towns, our three towns. And it's going to overwhelm the traffic, but I don't know what those, those are in those other towns. So, maybe we can find that out.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm only the planner for this town, so.
No, well, we know the planner in Foxborough, uh, Paige, and, uh,
The town manager now, so.
That's right.
I know the new planner, though. I know the planner in both towns.
One minute, please. And I, and I agree with some of the comments of the other board members in terms of, uh, you know, that there is, there is the, uh, NIMBY effect right now in my backyard, but if, if it makes sense for us to reconsider the East Street for other reasons, um, then we can look at the list of projects, uh, the sites that have come up and and reconsider anything else that might, might be better. If that is on the high, highest, is that near the highest list of the Open Space Committee or um, you know, if it's the most pristine piece of property we have in that end of town, then maybe, maybe that was an oversight on my part. So, I'm hoping to, happy to look at those again.
I'm sorry, just a couple of questions for, through you to Rachel. Uh, Mr. Orban made a mention about sort of a menu effect at town meeting. Is it, but is it allowable to, uh, amend, uh, a, a proposed overlay, uh, bylaw? MBTA, uh, district bylaw in district on the floor of town meeting?
They have been advising against it because you have to do that spreadsheet of that compliance. And so town meeting being the unpredictable animal that it is, you could potentially be in a situation where you're not in compliance based on that.
Okay.
Vote.
Thank you. The other question I had, uh, the, something that Mr. Woodhams and I sort of both alluded to. Do we have any examples yet of the state going to a town and saying, look, because you refuse to comply, we are going to essentially put you into receivership and create the zones for you? Has that happened?
No, because they've created an extension to July 14th.
Very good. Thank you.
Rachel, do you have anything else to add before we go to public comment?
Uh, the only thing I was going to say is, or suggest was what you already did, was maybe doing a more infill development. So there's existing development, but maybe you wanted, it has the potential to be redeveloped in the future. Again, underutilized, um, or yes, you can take credit for, you know, projects like this you've already approved, you know, so, um, I think there's the Ledgeview apartment complex. And then there's, I think, some development across the street on, on Franklin Street that's already developed. Um, and because again, a few of you board members have mentioned to me, well, Dedham's doing it, this place is doing it, this place is doing it. Well, it's not a completely apples-to-apples situation. You can take credit. Some communities are taking credit for multifamily housing that they've already created, and lucky for you, you're an adjacent community, you can locate it anywhere.
Yep. Not just in a downtown within a certain distance from the T Station, right?
Yeah, exactly. Yep, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, public comment, please raise your hand, uh, if you want to comment on anything we've said. I appreciate, we have your letters and we're reading them, so I appreciate if we don't reread those into the, but if you have some new information that you'd like to share. I see Jane D'Amico, name and address for the record, please.
Um, Jane D'Amico, 25 Lyndon Road. Um, one of the letters that you received was from my neighborhood. There were 35 names on it. And we are near the East Street location, not completely on it, but we're off of Winter Street, so, um, that na- that area is in our neighborhood, but I'm also on the Open Space Committee, and, um, our letter indicated that the East Street property is not just the highest rated property in that part of, in that part of Rantham. It's the highest rated property in all of Rantham. Um, it, as far as watershed protection, um, and, and we, we had sent a letter to you indicating that, you know, we'd like to be part of the conversation as the Open Space Committee, not me as an individual, um, when properties are selected. Because we are trying to, uh, per the master plan, um, we are trying to protect as many properties as we can. Um, so I wanted to clarify that. The other thing is, also in the letter, you had mentioned about, um, the Norfolk, the Norfolk and Foxborough sites, those were, um, when they had their MBTA votes, um, the properties that they selected, Norfolk selected a site on Palm Street, which flows into Route 115, which, um, is also like, very, very close to the East Street site, and the Foxborough, their vote was somewhere in the Pat's Place area. They were getting credit for something that they already had built, but then they needed to add. Like, they have to do a total of, I think, 1,200 units, something like that. I don't have the information in front of me, but it was something like, they had to do 1,200 or so units, but they were getting credit for something they already had built in that area and needed to add, I believe, um, 170 something more units, and that's in that Pat's Place area. So everything is, it's like a little triangle, if you look at it on a map. Um, the East Street property, the Norfolk site, and the Foxborough site. So I wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Thank you for that. And Rachel, we could potentially, just like we've done with the select board, hold a joint meeting, uh, if, if we thought there was value in that with the Open Space Committee, and I, I assume we could do that if that's the same board setup in terms of, you know.
We're still doing Zoom on open space, so I'm sure it would be pretty easy to combine meetings, uh, for as long as that's allowed.
Okay.
Other comment that I just wanted to, well, it's more of a question, I guess. Um, I, I like the idea of the overlay on something that's already developed, um, which is not something we suggested in our letter, except for, um, except for the outlets, we did mention that, but I like the idea, I think it's like Eagle Brook, or there's a couple of developments, uh, Ledgeview, you mentioned, things like that, I think are great. But my question was, one of the things we suggested was Route 1. And, um, the reason we suggested it, and I understand that it, it And um, the reason we suggested it, and I understand that it it's a higher tax rate for commercial. But that area, I I I've lived here for thirty two years. That area has been empty for the thirty two years. It's an eyesore. Um, so I'm wondering if the commercial tax rate, if things continue to be undeveloped commercially. You you're not getting, but you're not getting those taxes because nothing's there. So just just wondering, you know, how how you compare that, because for thirty years it's been empty.
Okay, thank you. I don't know who had their hand up next.
I think Jay did.
Jay and then Mary.
Thank you. So uh, thank you for listening. I'm uh Jay Brooks. I'm on Twenty Wisteria Way up in Rantham, so we're up near the E Street property. But uh, the first question I just wanted is the emails that were sent and the letters, I just want to make sure, are those part of the record and those get shared with all of the board members, I take it?
Yes, and they're also up on the website.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, and and now I want to first appreciate, I mean, I I don't envy you guys, right? I know there's a lot of hard work going into all this type of stuff. So, you know, but I I do hope that you kind of reconsider the properties that you did. And I've got a few notes here, but I hope you reconsider it in light of the comments, because I know it sounded as though there weren't that many comments last time. A lot of this surprised a lot of us and we weren't able to kind of share comments, but we're sharing comments now. And and I and I think it's important that you plan to pick the right properties. Uh, because, you know, whether the town agrees or not, sooner or later, I think you're gonna have to do this, right? And if the town doesn't decide to do it, the state can decide to do it. And the easiest thing I would hope is that they pick the properties that you pick. Right? And I think as soon as you start zoning it, the fact, you know, builders will be interested and it will get developed fairly quickly. So I talked about the significant of the points, you know, I appreciate everybody else's letters, chains, stuff is very, very appropriate, I think. Uh, but in particular, I would hope that you would reconsider, kind of listening to the comments or your your deliberations earlier. Hope you can reconsider the properties near the outlets and near Eaglebrook. And these are the ones that you guys already reconsidered, the armitage properties, the the mall that never was or the outlets that never were. And then the Eaglebrook property, I think, out on one forty. Um, you know, I think those fit. And, you know, they fit early. And I think that my impression you were in a rush to kind of make sure you made town meeting. Couple of the properties came up, you thought they fit. I I hope you have time now to reconsider those. What other comments do I have?
And maybe while you're while you're looking, I could just, we could respond to that because we use the guiding principles. We have, we thought that the one, that residential development didn't feel right necessarily down at the mall or across the street, the outlets or across the street. The other was, we felt that with retail changing and bricks and mortar maybe not being, you know, solid for the next fifteen or twenty years. Would a company like Simon want to take part of their retail brick and mortar and reposition it for other income? And we thought that could happen very quickly because it's got the infrastructure. It's got, um, you know, set up for the traffic. But but it's what's, what would happen then is that the tax rate would come down because it'd be residential and the impact to the town on the services would go up. So we didn't think that putting it there with a very easy development process would be the best solution. So that's why we stayed away from uh, at least the outlets um and down in that end, so.
Yeah, I I appreciate that. That's what makes it hard. Across the street armitage, I thought that that was kind of open and uh, you know, property that was did maybe easily developed, but it seemed to have a little bit of options that kind of were helpful. And in the mall, that never was, right? Those things, that's just, I I think property that's not very useful to anybody, right? So maybe it would be better to have it as 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 residential. But uh, also just to follow up on Mr. Orban's option, I mean, I had thought about that and and I think that maybe you don't want to hodgepodge and mix and match, but if you went to the to the town, maybe you could have an option of these two properties or these two properties and then make sure you do whatever matrix you have to do ahead of time. Uh, it might just allow the town to kind of have a voice in the vote. Uh, Foxborough MT MBTA in Gillette, so I think I didn't know where Norfolk was. I thought it was near the the train station. Foxborough, I think, is it Gillette? I think they're using the hotels as getting credit for some of this stuff, but uh, having followed Foxborough a lot and what Kraft wants to do at Gillette. I mean, I think he has overlaid all of the parking lots uh, as MBTA zoning, and that's gonna be a perfect place for a boatload of apartments right next to a train station. So uh, I would expect a lot of residential stuff going in that area. Uh, I didn't know that ledge view was an option before. I I kind of think that that's very interesting if that was considered before. And uh, just to to share, I won't go over all the properties that I kind of suggested with with help from others. But uh, I I think you're finding that you've got some interest in E Street. And if you present E Street as an option again, I think you'll have a lot of interest in supporting and not supporting that property, right? And and again, uh, I I think you need to, I think it's smart to plan on picking the right properties in case the town's hands gets forced and you have to put something there. Right? And and I won't address whether we agree with the MBTA properties or not. It's just if it happens, I think we need to be prepared. I think that's all my comments.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Rachel, question. I didn't think we could put this over and you said ledge view. Now ledge view, but not the forty B out back. You're talking ledge view.
No, I'm talking the forty B.
I thought we lost credits or had some implication for putting it over forty B.
Nope, that was the original um thought, but then when you information, it didn't throughout your eight month long process, it was found out that that is not the case. You don't lose your um forty B designation.
I mean, the the two buildings that are down at the end that are forty B have to be at least fifteen units an acre, don't they? I mean, they don't.
And and it again, uh, you, it doesn't have to be what's there existing. The overlay zone is dictating what it is. It's just the the zone has to has to meet.
But I mean,
Your existing buildings don't need to meet it. You, the zone just has to meet it.
But it's already there. And if it's fifteen units an acre and we lay it over, it's a, you know, kind of a home run. Possibly.
So that, yep.
So that's new information. I wasn't aware of that. We could put it over forty B.
Yeah, we talked, I was at one of the subcommittee meetings. I can find the meeting that we talked about it, but.
I do think we found that out. I do think we found that out um towards the end of the process. Um, I think you had the conversation with someone and and you and you discovered at the E O A H L C or something, and you discovered that we could put it over existing housing. I think it was like a game changer. And the other thing was that we didn't have to. We weren't out of compliance if we did something that didn't work. Those are the two new game changer things that.
Housing, yes, I didn't think forty B, so maybe I missed. But
But I mean, you know, in that case, maybe maybe we do consider Eaglebrook or, you know, whatever, because they they've got a lot of houses per acre there.
We have.
But yeah, be that as it may, uh, I, the other thing I I would note is I don't think we're gonna reopen the subcommittee we had. We're gonna have to form a new subcommittee because you're not gonna be there and you were on that subcommittee. And I may not be here and I was on that subcommittee, so we're definitely not gonna reopen the subcommittee we had, that's for sure.
Load a new one in.
A new one, but.
Up to you, Chuck.
Chuck is the subcommittee of one.
So, well, sorry, I I know there's a is uh waiting to speak.
I would be, I would be interested in understanding as we come back, Rachel, how we have a bunch of forty B in town. If I I can't imagine the state would say that because this whole thing is about density and building more housing, so I can't believe they let you.
It's just about zoning. It's just, it's not a housing production mandate. It's just zoning.
Yeah, yeah, right. Well, I would It'd be interesting to know what those sites are.
Consequences kicks in.
It would definitely be interesting to analyze that as part of this, because if there's already an opportunity with housing that's built in areas that we don't have to create new housing in.
So long, yeah, so long as it meets, you know, like um it has to be at least five acres is the smallest that you can have. You have to have at least twenty five contiguous, so long as at the end of the day, the planning board in whatever configuration you you meet, twenty five acres has, at least twenty five acres has to be contiguous. And then you can fi- have five, five acre lots. So that is all that I will tell you and keep you on the straight and narrow for.
That that you've told us.
At the end of the day, you need fifty acres, average of fifteen units per acre.
All right, uh, we have another hand up. Name, address, uh, please.
Hi, um, yes, my my Mary Hepburn, twenty Cobb Road. And I'm, uh, I created one of the letters, the part, um, the one that's mentions of the charm because I drive down east that uh, E Street section off of Route one. And it's, I just want to reiterate that I'm, it's really kind of pretty to drive down that street, like driving down one A uh, from Norfolk. It's woods, and I'm a member of the open space. So, um, and that's what I think of when I think of Rantham. I also am one of the people who did um, um, rate a lot of the properties. And E Street is fifty five, it was rated the highest fifty five. So it's higher than any of the properties that we rated out in West Rantham, including, you know, West Street and a lot of properties on West Street. Um, I just wanna, um, I re- I'm not gonna keep you. I agree, I just um, in come, I am in and I'm also nervous because it's the first time I ever spoke to you.
It's fine. Go ahead. Take your time.
Um, Jay, with whatever Jay said and whatever James said, I agree with that. And I'm really um what Mr. Orban said about the, you know, put it out to the town. I think that I I that's a nice idea and I appreciate and hope that you will reconsider E Street. It's behind, there's conservation behind it. And then you've got Crocker Pond. Okay, and it's just a pretty entrance into Rantham. And I don't live around there. And I'm glad to hear it's at at ledge view, which is on the opposite corner of where, because I'm off of uh, Madison and one forty. And ledge view is already busy, so if that could be used as part of it, I would appreciate it. And I did um, write down, I did look at the other properties. I'm sorry to say they may, I don't know if they're duplicates, and I thought about that of of properties you considered earlier. I'm getting late in the game. I'm gonna look at the guiding principles, but um, I'll be up, I'll be happy to help you or and the open space committee would be happy to help rate any properties or or their input. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I think we have one more hand up. Go ahead, Mr. Kane. Uh, you're on, you gotta take your phone off mute or you're.
Sorry, I'm trying to figure out these Zoom call conference centers. Anyway, um, no, Jeff Wilson, uh, ten Wisteria Way. Um, we attended the uh, the last town meeting and there was a pretty resounding rejection of this whole matter anyway. But it sounds like and that we're kind of gonna get stuck with this or you're fearful of that, it's my understanding. Uh, Mr. Lawrence uh, mentioned the fact that you guys had selected properties that you thought were gonna be hard to develop. What is, is that how you selected these various zones or areas?
No, it was, it, there is a guiding, set of guiding principles, and I encourage you to take a look at those. They're in the presentation that we gave. That that list, that list was what we used. Yeah, there is an item in that list that talks about not making this so that the town has to deal with seven hundred and fifty units next year. So trying to parse this out and figure out how to make this so that it doesn't hit the town all at once and that it built overtime. If it's if it's gonna be built.
Well, i- if it can be built, I think that's one of the questions. And I, it it sounds like to me that part of the selection of the east east street properties, or maybe some of the elements too, is the fact that it it had enough pain with it that it would force somebody away, even though we you you rezoned it for this mandate. Is, a- and from that standpoint, if we're gonna get stuck with it because it's an unfunded mandate. What's interesting to me is is that we should then take a look at it is what's the least cost, because that's what's gonna cost us as a town if it's unfunded. If that's what we're forced to pay for. So which of the properties that you selected would have the least amount of expense? In terms of us, how do we to put the roads in, the sewage system, whatever it is to manage all of these folks? Did you guys look at the least cost alternative to any of that if we're forced to do it?
We are, we assumed that a developer would have to pay for all of that. Septic systems, roads, improvements, buildings, infrastructure. What it didn't, what none of it included was the impact of the town around police, fire, schools. And I think that's what we're waiting for the state to tell us. Seven hundred and fifty units in our town, there is a cost to that. And you know, they have not provided, I I don't know exactly how the process works, but I think we can request for the information and they're supposed to send it back to us to validate that there is this X cost based on this law to the town of Rantham. We haven't gotten that back, so. That's, that's the stuff Mike King presented at the meeting, but in terms of any other any other development costs would be borne by the developer themselves. When we, so we look, just one more point, when we looked at E Street, it was at the far end of town, Route one forty, Route one, so traffic was was one of our, one of our guiding principles. But we also carved out a piece of land. It's not the entire parcel. And we felt that there's wetlands in there, there's um, I think that's an overlay watershed district area, Rachel.
It is, it is, yes.
And we felt that it would never be built to the fifteen units an acre because of the the amount that they would have to come off the wetlands and build within. I think that's only a fifteen acre, eighteen acre site that we chose up there. Still leaving an awful lot of land undeveloped and the parcel that they would be able to develop because of the wetlands and the setbacks and the water treatment system they have to put in was going to be less than, far less than fifteen units an acre. At least that's, that was my recollection of some of the conversations we had about E Street.
So it was, it was painful, so to speak.
We've, we felt and I'd I'd open up to the to Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Woodham for other thoughts that we had on those in the subcommittee, but.
No, that's my recollection is is that we we looked at it in that light and we said that that site had those benefits should we choose it. And we could, you know, even like those benefits being, yes, less economic benefit to a potential developer, are which is a benefit to the town. They would, they would develop fewer units because they couldn't fit them in or afford to fit them in or however with what they would have to do. But I think the other, the other thing was we could, you know, if the state came and accused us of cornering a developer that way, we could say, hey, look, it's right next to the MBTA station in Foxborough. That's what you wanted from us. You can't have everything. So there was a way for us to also justify the town doing what the supposed point of the thing was, which was getting people close to the T. And that's why Elysium is also close to that Franklin T at, as we can get in our town. And uh, you know, so that, I think that's the, that 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 plus what the chairman just said is what I recall.
Right, well, I'll, I'll, I'll throw in with with Jay in the sense that I think if we're forced to do this and we put pieces of property in front of the state to say, this is what our selection is, then we're gonna be forced to use those properties. The second piece, if we're looking for pain, and I agree, I saw the the five acre contiguous sections, I thought that was kind of interesting. In the sense that if you take five acre sections and you kind of stack them out, to me, that wouldn't, that that would limit a little more in terms of the convenience of building on something that we would put out there as a piece of property. Um, in in terms of saying, this is, if we've got to do this, this would be is what I would think it'd be more painful. Um, at the end of the day, but at the, you know, I I I'm concerned that with what has been mentioned in this meeting is is the fact that the state is gonna force our hands. One, we're gonna get stuck with it. Secondly, I think from a, from an infrastructure cost point, and I'm not talking about what a developer would pay, what we would have to provide, whether it's police protection, what whatever, all the town roads and all the other things that we'd have to do from the infrastructure part of it. And by the way, I would think sewage would be a big problem if you're putting that much dense And by the way, I would think sewage would be a big problem if you're putting that much dense population in a, in a given area, but we may get stuck with some of that.
That's, well, that's one of the impediments to a developer. They would have to do that, not the town.
Well, I was listening earlier with the kind of the discussions with the retirement village you guys are talking about. I could see that, but. At the same time, you never know what the state's gonna do. So a lot of that, I think if if the the area around the the. The whatever, the the new Rantham Village or whatever it is for the shopping area is the one that never got built. Is is probably if there is something, it probably would be the cheapest option that would run down our throats, number one, I would think overall if we're stuck with something. The second piece is, I hope you guys do take a look at this ledge place if we can adopt that as the, as the zone. That would solve a lot of those problems. I would encourage the the committee to to figure that out. Completely. And and if that's the case, then that would solve everybody's problem, that having problems with this, including the whole town who didn't want this thing to happen in the first place. So.
Right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if if I might, um, just because we're on the subcommittee together, we're talking about the East Street property. Um, my recollection is part of. When we looked at that property, there were a number of factors, not only the wetland, but there's a significant amount of that is aquifer protection. Which has a a density limit legally, they cannot. Any place, any part of that property that is. On the map as an aquifer protection, they cannot build over a certain density in those particular areas. Um, and we had specifically. Um, carved out the acreage to avoid those areas and to avoid the wetland, so that what would be left. Would not really be. Usable for any other development purposes. So that was part of, it would actually. By by putting those, by designating the twenty or so acres that we did, it would essentially protect the rest of it because. In order to be able to build on that, would, that would require a special permit and we would be able, we would have the discretion to. To turn that down. Um, and um. One point that I would like to make as far as. We we look at something like ledge view where those buildings as they stand would not have been allowed by our zoning. Um, at the time, they were allowed to be put in because of forty B. And we did not have the amount of forty B housing in town at the time, so the builder was allowed to build those. Essentially by right, by doing an end run around local zoning and going straight to the state, which allowed for buildings that are much taller. Than we would allow anywhere else in town. And my concern with. This M B T A is that it could eventually. We could eventually be facing the same kind of. Um. Permitting authority if we, if we don't choose an area. Um, designated by ourselves. It's not just that the state will come in and they'll say. Well, okay, you're gonna have to allow it in this spot. You're gonna have to allow it in this spot. Basically. Um, and Rachel, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I know you and I have had conversations about the appointment of a special master and. They could essentially say, if you do not have seven hundred and fifty units. You know, you know, in your town. Any builder that comes in. With a plan that meets the state guidelines can build whatever they want, wherever they want. And the town will be powerless to stop them, which basically. Could mean if we don't designate areas that we find acceptable as a town. We could end up with buildings the size of ledge view in our downtown area because. If the state decides that they're gonna make sure we get seven hundred and fifty units in this town. Any developer that wants to put them anywhere they want to, the state could theoretically give them the authority to do that and we would be completely powerless to stop any part of it.
Yeah, and I I'd like to move that conversation though to the board, to select board. That's not a planning board issue and I don't want to be. Alarmist here because, you know, we, I've heard that before too, is that, hey, the state's gonna come in and do this, but we've got time. We're under a lawsuit, we're being guided by our town attorney. He says we do not have to meet the July deadline, so because we're under lawsuits, so. I think we do have stuff in place if we wanted to go to a special town meeting that got set up. Whenever it's appropriate with the select board, that could happen and the town could vote on it and town could decide to. Vote on what we're presenting or decline it. Now that conversation would be part of that, right? What is the outcome? If we don't put something in front of the state that's approved by the town, that's it. To me, that's a different discussion than the planning board should be having though. Um, that's a, that's a what if down the road and we're dealing with how can we make the best out of this that we can to present to town meeting? Okay. Um. Okay, uh, Mr. Brooks, I think what was, we have another. Hearing tonight, so I'd like to take one more comment and then close this and we'll continue at the next meeting.
Did, did, did Donna Heinz want to have, make a comment like?
Um, I do. Donna Heinz, eight twenty five East Street. Um, just three quick points. First of all, it was twenty one acres that was carved out of the East Street property. Um, to have the overlay on. Secondly, addressing something that was said about um, by Mr. Maloney and Buasi. Um, yes, the commercial zoning for Route One was voted for in two thousand and eighteen, but that was long before this whole M B T A Communities Act. Came about, so that's something that I think could easily be revisited at this time. Um, and last, as far as the Route One traffic and Gillette and that whole area. It's not strictly Sunday night football. Sometimes it's Monday night, sometimes it's Thursday night. They have concerts on weeknights. Um, and obviously traffic, rush hour traffic coming home, that they have to compete with all of that too. And there's very heavy travel, traffic on all of the backroads during those times. Um, that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, did you have anything else, Mr. Brooks, before we continue to the next uh, meeting?
Just, just one thing, it just, you know, I I'm sure you're gonna consider it, but I would just be careful of. I would hope you're careful and consider picking properties that kind of if you delve into it, they're not buildable, right? And then it doesn't pass and then you're stuck with not having an.
That's absolutely one of the things we considered when we looked at them because. I think uh, somebody mentioned the site uh, down past the outlets. It's, I guess. One of them was a former dump and sometimes if you put the overlay on something that's actually you can't build on top of, it won't get a pass anyway, so.
That was it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, do we have a motion to continue this public hearing until? April? Second. It's seven fifteen.
Second.
Question.
Motion, second discussion, yes, Mr. Maloney.
Uh, just uh, for Rachel, for you, what do we have already on April second? Uh. Would this be better, it would be better to defer this till later in April?
Um, well, as of right now, the only public hearings that you have are zoning amendments and the pond home and the pond home was continued to the sixteenth, so.
Okay.
You guys are good. You've got no new public hearings. Because I have deterred them until after um, the new members.
Board.
Come in.
Okay, thank you.
Motion discussion or any other com- any other questions? Thank you all for your comments tonight and the feedback that you've given. We appreciate that.
I I will just make a public, sorry. Um, I know a lot of people have been submitting public comments through the select board's office. Please send, send them to planning. Some of you have, but if you can also let your friends, family. Dog walker, hairdresser know, submit them to planning because they do, I need to record all of those within a record because it is a public hearing. And sometimes, while we like talking to each other, so I don't want, I want to make sure nobody's comments get missed, so please. Send them to planning. That goes to three people in my office, so they get up on the website and it's for sure gonna go to the planning board. So I just want, just let people know, please. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, roll call vote, Mr. Bossi.
Aye.
Mr. English.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Maloney.
Aye.
Mr. Orbin.
Aye.
Mr. Woodhams.
Aye.
I think nine, aye, seven in favor, no one opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.